Oh, is that... okay.
Okay, Donna, you had something you wanted to say, no?
I did, in the sense as I began the proposal tonight, I did neglect to go back into two key parts of this, which is, one, we never wanted to come to the board and ask for, just give a blank sum of money to... and we did exclude schools that had the QSCB funding already. Our plan, our original proposal, whether it's tonight or in the future, would be to come back, because blank checks for a certain amount of money, that does not seem to be the best use of money. So, we feel like we need to come to you with what those needs are and document what those are. And I did neglect to say that at the very beginning.
That's all right. You're forgiven, no problem.
Thank you. I like to be forgiven.
Mr. Kiger, you have your comment.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I'm glad, Donna, that you pointed that out, because that's an important distinction to make, that there's a reason that we're talking about five high schools and not seven, because Concord's not on the list, and Northwest isn't on the list, because we have already provided funds for that. That's not to say their needs have gone away, but we've provided an awful lot of funds for them to do some projects. Their athletic directors included.
I saw that list.
But that's not in the motion. The motion's for five high schools, at $80,000 per, so those two aren't on there. And you mentioned something that I want to go back to, and that was the revenue side. And what's getting ready to happen at Robinson is somewhat unfortunate. And if you talk to the A.D.s, they'll tell you, when you play the Charlotte Mecklenburg teams, they don't travel. So, the revenue that our teams have gotten for the last, has it been four years we've had our county...
Three.
Three, county conference, are the highest that they're going to be for the foreseeable future, until we realign. If we can keep it, if we can go back to the Cabarrus County Conference, that'd be great. But for next year, Robinson's playing Mecklenburg County schools in 4A, that, and I don't have firsthand experience, but the A.D.s will tell you, by and large, those schools don't bring fans, you're not going to make the revenue that you did when you played your county brethren. So, that piece of it is important to note. I do support the proposal. Nobody wants to give anybody a blank check. Donna told us last week that she would have an oversight group, I think with principals' input, you said, and the A.D., and Mr. Whitkey and his group, because a lot of this is facilities, and with Donna, that's not a blank check. I think it's okay to do it that way, so that we don't get bogged down in the minutia of one project versus another. We've looked at the big picture and told them, "We know you have needs, here's some funding to take care of those needs." Now, I've got to go back and what I thought about all day long, that I was going to start with, I just didn't want to forget the Robinson piece. But just briefly in a nutshell, and I know we don't want to beat this thing to death, but we do have a lot of needs. There is no question about it, and for the record, I have been to Royal Oaks. I didn't go this week. Evidently, some of my board members did. I'm glad you went. I have been there before. That school does have a lot of needs. I'm a little, somewhat sad and disappointed that this seems like it's turned into athletics versus Royal Oaks, because that's not what it is. We have to strive to do numerous programs all the time, and look at the system as a whole. We can't look at one specific piece and ignore the others. And since I've been here, which is a pretty short period of time, but we've started the STEM program, which by all accounts is doing great things. We have facility needs there that certainly we need to talk about and address. I'm thrilled to death that the parents are there, engaged in the program, and doing what they're doing. But we started that, we started the IV, we now have a string program, we support band, we do drama clubs, we do a lot of different things in support. But the one thing that we have not done, since I sat up here, was we've not given one dime to athletics. That's just a fact. We haven't. There's a school of thought, and I think it's reasonable to say this is correct, that athletics is sort of the front door, or the front porch of a school. It's not the kitchen or the den. It's not the main thing that's going on, but it's the front porch. People see our schools, they come to our games, they access and see what we're doing, by what happens in the community with athletics. I don't know if my fellow board members, the new ones, are aware of the Gold Pass program. You know, I sat next to a gentleman at Robinson High School, struck up a conversation, he had no idea that I was a board member. Well, he just started talking, I said, well, elderly, so I thought, well, do you have a son or grandson who plays? He said, "Oh, no, I'm just here, I love the Gold Pass, I go to games all the time." And so, our community stays engaged, at least we hope, I hope they do, to come to ball games, to see our kids play and compete. But we do have some needs. We've got to let the athletic directors try to summarize what they've got, what they're trying to do, and we certainly do need to prioritize the list, or let them prioritize. I'm okay with doing it with your approach. But we can't, I just don't want it to turn into, "We can't do any of this because we have other needs." Well, if we had that mentality, we would never get anything done. We do have to prioritize, and at some point in time, and at some level, something may rise above some of this. But to say that we don't need to do any of this, or all of this is a luxury and we can't do, I'm sorry, I just don't agree with that. So, Mr. Chairman, I'm in support of the motion, or not the motion, but the proposal as it's shown. My fellow board members, at least the two that have spoken previously, have some reservation about it, maybe want to study it further. I'd be okay and amenable to that. But as far as being able to proceed forward, and giving our athletic directors some guidance and direction on being able to help with their needs, I'm okay with that.
Thank you, Mr. Kiger, for your comments. Very good comments. Mr. Walter, you have yours ready.
Well, as a new board member, honestly, I'm not real familiar with the athletic programs at this point, and I was appreciative of the listing. I did look for the priority list, that wasn't quite there. So, I would not be ready to act on this motion today. I think more time would be a good idea. I mean, personally, for me, I am a parent of two kids in that STEM program, two elementary school kids, and not saying that it's a higher priority than anything else, but I think security is a high priority. And I think that's something that we had a list of some schools that still needed additional security measures taken, like cameras or something to that effect. I think those, it's something that, as a system, we need to focus on that first. If there's money left over, let's talk about athletics, let's talk about some other things as well. Something that you had mentioned about the busing, I think having an activity bus, you know, I think that's an affordable way to get places. It helps not only athletics, it helps the regular schools for field trips, a very affordable way. We have issues that I hear the buses are not doing too well. That would be a good use, I think, because it benefits everybody, not just a specific location. And the other part that was, that I'm confused about, is we had a list of projects at our retreat that we talked about, and they were apparently Tragoed, ranked, ordered, and there were some other projects that were on this, that never made that list. And these projects, you know, what were those projects, was the question. There's a project, one of those projects was that STEM Academy, that we're going to get more information back and move forward with. I'd still like to see a presentation or something to that, because that's about enhancing our school systems. But anyway, that's kind of where I stand at this point. I'm willing to wait to get some more additional information. I'm really trying to learn more about the athletic program. It's a lot out there, and a lot to understand, but thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walter. Mr. Harrison, you have your comments ready.
Could I defer to Mr. Phillips first, please?
Absolutely. Mr. Phillips?
You caught me off guard. Overall, I think I agree with Barry's comments at the beginning, that we need to look at other options. I certainly believe in the importance of athletics. I, after all, went to a public high school in Texas that had its football team ranked number one in the state while I was there. So, I know what big-time football can do for a school spirit. I think it's important to educate the whole child, and that means physically as well as mentally. But we have this enormous list of unmet needs in this county, and I think if we're going to spend money on athletic facilities, the very first things we have to do are to focus on the things that affect and will help the safety of the student athletes. And so, if there are projects like that, I'm certainly willing to consider them, along with a lot of these other things that have been mentioned. And I also like Rob's idea about activity buses. I know that that is on the capital list that the Budget Committee is considering, but I also know it's probably far enough below some of the other things that may not be addressed this year. And I think some of those activity buses are getting up at the 200,000-mile mark as well, and that's a safety issue that also needs to be addressed.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Thank you, board members, for all your comments, and this... oh, I'm sorry, David, I forgot you. When you defer that, you just messed the whole system up. All right, go ahead.
Three things out of whack, they're my fault.
Don't tell me what Mr. Phillips already said now.
I think every member up here wants to say yes, and maybe we need to start saying no to something. I mean, yes to buses, yes to resource officers, yes to prioritization, but at some point, each school has needs that might be so precise, that maybe we cannot address those particular needs. And I don't know how to make that high level and make it, you know, make sense, but there are things that we should take care, I mean, mold asbestos in a school, we've got to take care of. We've got buses, or we've got the tires and the mechanics, you know, we can get buses for athletics, athletic programs, we can facilitate some needs, but other needs, I guess what I'm getting at, is that we need a plan, and as we've said, throwing money at, and other expressions, or analogy I want to use is putting a Band-Aid on the need of each athletic program, doesn't address a long-term need, and it loses all control, too, for that matter. But we, I'm trying to argue in some useful way here, that we need a more precise plan, and that we need prioritizations, but also, in some way or another, the willingness to say to each school, whether it's some needs or athletic needs in particular, that these are needs that we recognize, but we can't address because they are prioritized relatively lower, and that they need to be considered as wants and desires, as opposed to actual needs. Yes, we do need to table this for greater study, and I don't want to, you know, drag this out or not address it soon. We do need to act on the funds we have available to us, and put them to good use. But what I'm sensing here is that we don't have a plan. Maybe I'm mistaken, and that's not a criticism, that's just an observation. What I'm sensing is that we need a method to invoke, to go forward with these needs, and I guess I'm overwhelmed by all these needs myself, but partly because we have to have some kind of formula that we stick to rigorously, rigidly, in a disciplined way, to address what needs we can address.
Okay.
And finally, in a brief kind of way, I wish we could itemize certain needs that school organizations or booster organizations should explicitly be responsible for, or particular types of expenses that those organizations should burden, should shoulder, as opposed to this, you know, massive list of everything that their needs are. I know I'm all over the board here, I'm just trying to say that I need a higher-level plan to help me manage in my mind these particular desires and needs.
Okay.
I hope that made some sense, but I'm trying to be, trying to get my brain around all these competing needs.
As long as it made sense to you. That's the most important thing. Okay, Mr. Harrison, I understand what you're saying, and I think that most of the board members, you know, that I've listened to tonight, and last week as well, are basically saying the same thing, basically. But the motion, or not the motion, but the recommendation as it is, if it was to vote tonight, it would fail. I'm sure of that, because nobody wants to give anybody a blank check without a prioritization list of what are you, you know, we've got the list of what they want to do, but we need to see what they need to do. And then, those needs need to be prioritized, and the safety and security issues would be the top priority, because I don't want us to be looking down the road sometime, you know, and say, "Well, if we had put this here, or if we had done that, when we had the funds to do it readily, to do it," and we didn't, and it cost us immensely, was a tragedy of some sort, and Lord help us if that ever happened. But when it comes to spending money, excess money, I think that the children's safety and security is number one, above athletics, above everything, the safety, because when the parents send their kids to school, they are depending on us to make sure that they come home at the end of the day. And if there's anything that we can do to make sure they do, then we need to do that. I don't think there's anyone here tonight would disagree with what I just said. And so, with that being said, you know, I don't have a problem, you know, with tabling, and if that's what the board wants to do for more discussion, and I'm not sure that's the right thing to do, because $400,000, it's not going to put a dent in the amount. It would take, in my opinion, millions and millions of dollars to even touch this, the same as it is for our schools, $180 million worth of needs, and we can't expect the county to say, "Okay, boys, we're going to cough up $180 million, go take care of your stuff." That's not going to happen. There has to be a plan, and that's what we're working on. We're working on a plan with the county for that part, and we're going to have to work on a plan with this part as well. And I would be willing to see us come up with a compromised motion, even if we don't do what we're talking about doing here tonight. But I think maybe, probably, the best thing for us to do is just see if there's a motion that it can be tabled, and then we can give you guidance after we see how that goes, as to what we would expect, and when we would expect it, so we can take action on it. Does that make clear, is that clarity?
I'm following you.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, that seems like a prudent course to me. I do want to clarify one notion on the activity buses, to make sure, again, that the new board members know, the sports teams have to reimburse mileage. You know, when they go somewhere, somebody's paying that, because it doesn't come out of our budget, it doesn't come out of the school budget. So, there's a booster club function back that they have to raise, and through some hard work by Mr. Farr, who's here, I think we got an adjustment on that rate, and a little more comparable number to what the surrounding counties are paying. But that's just another example of an expense that's occurred. But as far as the motion goes, I'm certainly willing to table it, and would offer up that maybe the best course of action would be for the board liaison to athletics to sit with you and the principal and the A.D.s, and stress to them the importance of an actual prioritized list that in no way, shape, or form exceeds $80,000, and with the notion that you might not get that, but that's what we're at least going to look at, and have some... I think it's critical, we haven't really talked about, but I think it's critical to have some principal input on that as well. But so, if, you know, I guess I'm willing to hear what the pleasure of the board is, but I'm willing to offer a motion to table the recommendation, and then that would be sort of my recommendation for the guidance to give Donna to proceed.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kiger. And I also...
Sorry, let me just say, in knowing full well that my role on that group is to be the eyes and ears of this board, who has spoken very clearly, that they're not as far on board as I am, they're somewhat on board, but that we've got to be critical and ask critical questions, and compare those needs versus what we've got to deal with. And so, it's not just a, "Hey, well, great, Blake's here, and he helped us put the list together, and now we're back over here." So, I mean, my role clearly would be a critical thinker from a board perspective.
Mr. Chair? Just missed a small procedural point, because I happen to be reviewing our policy on procedural motions, because we don't have them that often. Technically, it'd be a motion to defer consideration, which is, takes the place of the lay table, and we don't do it that often, so just to remind the board, under Policy 2340, the way it works is, it expires 100 days after the motion, if there's been no action to revive consideration.
So, that will be a motion to defer.
So, you'd have a motion to defer consideration, you debate that. If you pass that, it's deferred from tonight, it can be put on any agenda going forward. If no one puts it on an agenda for 100 days, about three months, then it would go away. Although, you could certainly, the administration could bring forward, you could bring forward the issue again, but that's technically the way a motion to defer consideration would work, if that's the pleasure of the board.
Okay, thank you, Ms. John Reccez, for your legal advice. I'm glad that you were here tonight for that. I wanted to say another thing also, too, and this would be primarily for the parents of Jay Robinson, because I know that they've worked diligently, you know, for a number of years to raise money to build the fieldhouse out there. And it was before, during my two-year absence, when the former board had made, I don't know whether it was a gentleman's agreement, or whether they was in a written type of an agreement, or whatever, but my understanding was, was that from that agreement, that the board had said, "Well, you know, you parents raised half of the cost of an expected fieldhouse, and we'll somehow try to raise the other half to match what you did." Well, they raised around $80,000, what I understand, have spent some money on architectural design, that type thing, and then they persuaded the commissioners that they really needed a fieldhouse pretty bad, and so, they've obtained $300,000 additional funding for that. So, after saying all of that, I feel a very strong commitment to the parents of Jay Robinson to, at the very least, up to $80,000, match what they have done, and that would leave the 320 still available for whatever we decide to do. But just for whatever that's worth, I feel a real strong commitment to those folks, because I think it would be amiss of our own self to tell you, "We're going to do something like that publicly," and then not do it. So, I think that we would be pretty much obligated to do at least that much for Jay Robinson, for those parents. But now, as far as, you know, doing a deferment of this particular recommendation, I have no problem. And so, Mr. Kiger, you would need to, you know, to amend what you had stated, because you had stated it as a table, and we can't do it that way according to our terms.
Okay, and I'm willing to wait and see if anybody else wants to make a comment, if that's okay by the chair.
Absolutely. I think it's very much in order, and if, Ms. Carpenter, you want to make some comments?
Well, I'm curious, is the deal with Robinson, what was promised to Robinson? I mean, I've been on this board, and I don't remember a promise made like that.
Well, that's just what, that's what I'm saying, see, I don't know whether it was written, whether it was a gentleman's agreement, or how it was, but my understanding was...
I'm a female, and I don't remember making it.
Well, I can't hardly remember what happened last week, much less two, three, four years ago.
And I've been on here seven years, and it seems like, which gentleman made it?
Yeah, well, maybe, Donna, do you have any recollection of a conversation that was had, because this has been ongoing, maybe you can enlighten us more than what I think I did.
I remember the conversation, but I'd feel better to go back and check the record, to be totally...
I mean, if we...
It was discussed in the board meeting.
You know, I mean, that's why things should be written down. If somebody promises something, we keep our word, but that's why things should be written down if something's made. With that, and by all means, if something was done, of course, we keep our word. And one of the things with that, I mean, it's really so unfair, because you look what Central did. They did theirs all theirselves, I mean, the parents and the school themselves. And, you know, then you have another school has things handed to them. You know, that's not fair from one school to another, because they sold, what, got a car, sold it, and everything like that, so... And what, the school raised $86,000, then what, the commissioners gave $150,000? No, this is for Robinson.
No, Robinson, they gave them $300,000 to the commissioners, I believe that's what it was, not to see $300,000.
No, $150,000. I thought we had $150,000.
$300,000.
Tell me about Robinson.
Yeah, Robinson.
The commissioners gave them $300,000.
Yeah.
Oh, three, I thought we only had $150,000.
No, no. They had 80, and they've spent 11 of that, so they've got $60,000, somewhere $69,000.
And we still don't have enough to build that?
Well, see, we hadn't got to that part yet. We don't even have a clue what it's going to cost. That's why I said up to $80,000 on our part, to match what they did, and that would be the only right thing, in my opinion. If they, if we said we was going to match upwards of $150,000, which would be, they did $150,000, and we would match that at some point. Now, this hasn't been verified, it would have to...
Oh, okay.
It would have to be investigated to find out where that came from, but Donna's going to do that and let us know about that. But like I say, all I wanted you to know was that I felt a strong commitment. If we made a commitment to these folks, then we need to stand by it, up to what they raised. If they raised $150,000, then I would feel committed to match that, which is what we said we would do, if in fact we did say that.
Yeah, I'd like to find out, because I don't remember what was said with that.
Let me go back with Mrs. Monroe then, and let's pull our records.
Uh, excuse me, yes.
The list that Robinson provided does not have a fieldhouse as a number-one priority. It just, it has a bunch of different things. If that was an issue, wouldn't it be on here, as to that's what they wanted?
Well, that was the...
I need to indicate, the principal has indicated that is their number-one priority, but it was just listed in the body. That's not a prioritized listing, sorry.
That's just the other needs, the other multi-multi-needs. And, but anyway, Donna, if you'll let us know on that, after we find out whether we're going to defer or not.
I'd like to make a motion to defer.
Okay.
I still had a comment to make.
Wait, 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 wait.
Undeffered?
We said we weren't going to beat this to death, but let's go ahead and do it.
Come on, let's settle down. All right, Mr. Schumaker's had his mic on here for a couple of minutes, so let's go ahead and down with him.
Well, yeah, I talked to Lynn Whitkey today a little bit, and, you know, part of it is, we don't have this estimate that we're waiting on, this fieldhouse, and he was planning to present that to us in April. So, part of why I wanted to defer is because I wanted to have a lot more information, so we could get a clearer picture of what that looked like, and then also, by then, we have sorted some of these other projects out that we're looking at, to try to increase safety at some of the schools that we're working with, Royal Oaks, and, you know, I don't know about Coltrane, if we'll be able to resolve all their issues, but, you know, we had a lot of safety issues that we're trying to use some of this money for, but I am waiting for that, and so, he said he would be coming forward in April with some information.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Schumaker. And in addition to, Ms. Smith, whenever you, if the board votes to defer this, Ms. Carpenter has made a motion, we'll hear the rest of the board, and we'll call for a second. But I would recommend, though, that if we do vote to do this, that you would assign a dollar mark to those issues as well, keeping in mind, though, safety and security up front. Okay? All right, with that being said, Mr. Walter, do you have something else? Oh, Mr. Phillips, okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I agreed with you, Mr. Chair. If the previous board made a commitment to the boosters to match whatever they've raised, then certainly we should be obligated to do that. I would even take it a step further, since the county commissioners have designated this as a high-priority project by virtue of allocating $300,000 to it, I think that we have an obligation to see that the project gets made, or comes to fruition. So, you know, within budgetary reason, of course. So, I certainly look forward to hearing the real numbers next month from Lynn Whitkey, but I'm definitely inclined to support that.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Mr. Harrison, you have any comments on this?
None formulated into a clear idea, so no.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Harrison. Mr. Walter, you have any additional thoughts? Okay, Mr. Kiger.
Just one last, and Ms. Carpenter's right, that Central did, they got theirs built, I guess Northwest got theirs built. There is a pretty big distinction now, though, as opposed to then, code requirements have changed, and at one time, people were building things on our campuses without permits and without engineering. And a previous board to this one said, "We're not doing that anymore." So, Robinson now is required, by board policy, to go get engineering drawings done, and which, all of that raises the cost of what you're trying to do. So, it's not a fair comparison to say that, "Well, Central went and built theirs, why can't Robinson..." I agree, "Hey, if you want it, go raise funds and do it," and this, that, and the other, but it's a little unfair to, because the climate is different now than it was then. So, in any event, I, well, for the comment, I could second the motion to defer.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kiger. And board, I appreciate your comments, and your open and honesty with me about how you feel on this subject. And so, with that being said, Ms. Carpenter has made a motion that this recommendation to provide the schools with $400,000 be deferred until sometime in the near future, and Mr. Kiger has seconded that motion. So, with a motion and a second, all those in favor of deferring this, say aye. Aye, are there any opposed? Okay, the motion carries, it's deferred, and hopefully you'll get back to us rather soon, because, you know, we've got to make a decision on this, okay?
It's 100 days, I heard that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We hope it'll be sooner than that, I hope.
Does this mean I get an SRO now?
All right, thank you very much. Okay, board members, let's move right along and close this meeting out here. We've got one more, we've got one more item here, and this is the revision to the Cabarrus County Schools Board Meeting Calendar. And if you remember, we talked about this, that we had some conflicts for our March 21st budget work session meeting, and so we have asked the board to approve us making that data that we were supposed to receive that night on April the 8th in our regularly scheduled work session meeting. And then the other item here that we want to change is the June business meeting. We had it down on June the 17th, which was the week after graduation, and we felt like that since we got the graduations all worked out, and the event centers booked, and all that's done, that there's no reason why we can't have our work session on June the 10th. So that's what the recommendation is, and you've had the revised calendar for a couple of days now to look over. And so do we have any discussion on this? And if we do, we'll start on Mr. Phillips' side, and we'll quickly work our way down. Mr. Phillips is fine, Mr. Harrison?
No, no questions.
Okay, Mr. Walter? Okay, Mr. Kiger? Ms. Carpenter? You okay, Ms. Carpenter?
Yeah, yeah, so we're doing it June the 10th.
June the 10th, yeah, June the 10th.
And what was the other day?
Well, it's the same, it's already April the 8th, we already have it down for our work session. Mr. Schumaker, are you okay?
Well, you just made one statement, the work session will be on June the 3rd, and the business meeting will be on June the 10th, as the way this is listed in this calendar.
No, I don't think I said anything about, it'll be the business meeting, the work session is on, yeah.
Yeah, but you said something about the work session being June the 10th.
Yeah, I might have messed up. The work session is on the 3rd, and then this meeting here will be on the 10th, and we had it scheduled for the 17th. And that was because of the graduation, there was a conflict in the graduations, but that's all resolved now. Okay, you good to go?
Yeah, I'm good to go. I just, you said something that was not, what I didn't see, and I was just trying to make sure.
Well, I'll allow me to say anything. This late in the evening, I'll allow me to say anything. All right, board members, so do I have a motion that we approve the revised calendar?
So moved.
And seconded.
Motion, Mr. Schumaker's second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Mr. Harrison made the motion, Ms. Schumaker seconded. Okay, board members, it's time for us to convene in closed session. I'd like to have a motion that the board convene in closed session.
So moved.
All right, all those in favor, wait, I'll have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, now, the board will be convening in closed session. So at this time, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to conclude our open session, and like to say good night to everyone, and we'll see you back in April. No, yeah, April, already.
Don't we need to read the statute?